All right, this recording will start.
Yeah.
Listen.
Yeah.
Snowmobile's gone.
Like to welcome everyone out tonight to our Planning Commission meeting. Tonight, for our opening remarks, Chris Sands will give those remarks and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My remarks will be in the form of a poem from Ken Brewer, who was a former Utah poet laureate and longtime resident of Logan. This poem's called Trout Fishing in Utah. Lyman fished the Logan River above and below the first dam. He never fished the reservoir where children and retirees dropped bait from anchored poles, then played or slept. Lyman waded the cold mountain water, casting royal coachmen, nymphs, red grasshoppers with kicking legs. He fished for lunk-bellied browns, the natives big as a man's arm. He'd bring them home headless for Maisie to clean and cook. He tossed the heads back in the river and watched them roll and tumble till they sank. He'd thank each one. At night, he would eat like a cat, spitting bones on the plate, the table, the floor. Maisie would ignore him, stay upstairs, where she would paint by candlelight her arms swimming in cerulean blue. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Chris. Has every... Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting?
Yeah, I'd just like to note, Commissioner Lee did forward me a few corrections that I will make, including the name of Nathan Dowd, which is noted as Dowd in the... Been a couple of corrections in the past.
You see any other corrections or revisions that are needed? Take a... I take a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Accept approval of the minutes. On our regular action items tonight, we'll start out with our Creekside Estates subdivision, the First Amendment. Can we get a report from staff on that?
Yes. And yeah, typically our subdivisions and subdivision amendments are on the consent calendar, but there has been some interest in this particular subdivision amendment, so we've added it to the regular agenda. Let me bring up the map here. So Creekside Estates subdivision amendment is a request to change the boundaries of lots 1 through 6 of the existing seven-lot subdivision. This is just west of Smithville, along 800 West and south of Highway 218. In addition to amending lots 1 through 6 of the existing seven-lot subdivision, they're also creating eight additional building lots. This will involve a total of 30 acres in the rural RU2 zone. I've listed the way that each of the existing lots will change and then the sizes of the new lots on the staff report, I won't go through those individually. But the subject properties are all legal and conform to the original proof subdivision plat. You may recall, last November, there was another subdivision amendment for this subdivision that was limited to a few of the lots, but that request was withdrawn by the applicant. A rezone from the agricultural 810 zone to the rural RU2 was approved by county council for all the properties within the subdivision boundary this last April. And as mentioned, the RU2 allows for the division of property at one lot for every two acres. So with acreage they have, the subdivision will be maxed out with the 15 lots as proposed in this amendment. The applicant has provided water require... Water rights for each of the new lots, and they are pending, so they will have to be finalized and approved prior to recording the permit. They have contacted and worked with their local partners and determined that onsite wastewater is feasible for the new lots. There are some concerns with storm drainage and land disturbance as part of it, but we have conditions of approval to make sure that those issues are mitigated and those requirements met. Again, they are on 800 West, which is a Smithville City Road. Smithville City did provide a letter, which I forgot to add as an attachment to the document, but I have it up here. Just talking about, you know, that they... The properties have not requested to be annexed and there is no sewer services available in this area.
Zooming in on that maybe?
Oh, sure. Looks really big on my screen.
It is. Much better.
Okay. But it does talk about if the proposed new lots... If there's no changes made to 800 West, then Smithfield will consider the improvements to be completed. However, if additional lots will be fronting onto 800 West, then frontages and driveway entrances must meet the city standards. And then the two private streets where the majority of the lots take access from the Smithfield City Road will require additional signage and lighting from the city. There's noting that a bond is required for all modifications to the city curbs, deters and streets. So Smithfield has commented on this, as far as those road additions may be required. And it is a condition of approval that they complete those and bring us confirmation of the approval and that it's finalized and approved prior to recording the plat. As far as any other concerns, the two private roads. Go back to here. So this is the subdivision as existing. Our GIS folks have specifically added to the new subdivision plat, it's kind of overlayed so you can get a better idea of where the new lots are, what's the subdivision layer off. So the numbers and lines you can see in yellow are the existing and then, not entirely clear, but you can see where the additional lots are. Lots 12, 13, 14, and 15 are being added to this northern section. The subdivision is divided by a creek, some creeks here. And then on the north part, which is also accessed by another private road, lots 9... 8, 9, 10, and 11. 10, 11. Sorry, I can't read that. But yeah, so that's where all the lots are. So there are, will be one kind of on the frontage of the 800 West that may trigger some requirements. And then the requirements for these private access roads, they will have to meet a major private road standard for our road manual, and that will require some improvements to the access points along the right of way. So there is some improvements that will need to be done there. So that is kind of the overlay to give you a better idea of that. There is some sensitive areas in the, as I mentioned, the Summit Creek and the Irrigation Canal. And then there is the floodplain and floodplain buffer are also located on the property. A few of the lots located in there have received exemptions from SMLA, but all of those are still required to be shown on the plat as they still exist even though they got an exemption. I've received a couple of calls on this, but no written public comment regarding the coordinates. And then with the conditions that we have listed, the subdivision that we're requiring requirements. So we are ready to go for full on that. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't see in our... And I know that we're not ready to get to that point, but you think our conditions or conclusions should include something regarding the request from Smithfield City?
So that isn't a condition. It is on... Six. Prior to recording the plat, the applicant must provide confirmation.
Okay, I apologize, I overlooked it.
Yeah, so number six does cover that.
Chair, may I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Do we know how much land or acreage the roads, the private roads are taking on this? I'm wondering how we take 30 acres, throw roads in there, and we're still qualifying for 15 lots?
Because they're not dedicated to the county, we don't typically take it out of the net development. If they were public roads, absolutely we would, that would come out of the net development. Or if they had to give us dedications along a county road, that does come out of the net development, but it's not...
My second question, of those requests, have you had anything that talked about water? I mean, we're talking 15 lots with wells, right?
Correct.
And we did talk about that there is reason to consider water issues at this point now.
Well, we do require them to bring the water rights so that they are...
Understood, but this is...
The rezone, yeah, is also... We don't require water rights at that point, but that's also... I believe we discussed it previously.
How old was this rezone to you two?
Just earlier this year in April. So I think you heard it in March, and then the county council approved it in April.
Well, at that discussion, there was talk about this drainage and everything else that was concerned too, right?
Yeah. Go ahead, Brady.
I guess, I guess the concern that I have with this whole deal, and I know we had an applicant that was just north of them, that was kind of co-joined or part of this whole deal. Over the past three, three years or so that we've dealt with this, when this specific development originally started, the county had come to a point where they were all but going to shut development down altogether. And we kind of come to an agreement that, you know, we'd look at smaller developments on a case by case. And so when this originally come in, they asked for what they're going for today. And I think they qualified because of the parcels, automatically they was still able to get seven, which if I call correctly was still even higher than we were looking at. But I don't know, I just kind of have a hard time with it myself because, I don't know, it's not what we envisioned for there and it's not... I mean, we went from working together with the county council that we weren't going to... Part of them didn't want nothing at all, and then they wanted it. And I know we're already past that because we approved it again for a two lot, but it just seems like it just keeps coming back trying to get, you know, more and more and more out of it. But that's only my thoughts.
Any other comments?
Just a quick question, Mr. Chairman. Back on condition six, Angie, it references in the fourth line down, confirmation from Smithfield City that the frontage for Lot 12 along 800 West meets the city's requirements. Is that the correct lot or is it Lot 7? Because earlier in the discussion, it refers to under EC4, that Lot 7 takes access directly from 800 West.
So Lot 7 is existing.
Okay.
And was approved with direct access off of Smithfield City instead of using one of the private roads.
Okay.
So this new Lot 12, they have frontage directly along 800 West. For instance, the county, we require a 90-foot frontage.
Yeah.
Along a private or public road, so that's just a reference to that requirement.
Okay, but they're not going to access 8 West?
No, they're going to access off the private road.
Right, okay.
What was the requirement? How many houses can be built on a private road? Do we?
Well, the road manual will change in January. The Director of Public Works, Matt, is here.
Because when we were going over that before, I thought there was a limitation to how many we could actually put on a private road.
And that was true previously, but with that road manual changes, that has increased. And now you can have a minimum of... I'll let Matt take over. Five? Sorry, your student. Five on a gravel and a minor private road, but once you get past that, you have to upgrade it to a major private road.
Angie's doing a great job. Yeah, currently the road manual says five homes and under can still be on a gravel road. Over five, so six and up to 20, I believe, then you're paid. After that, then this can require special approval.
So this one, we're just looking at how many? We got on each side? We're approving seven more, but...
One other quick thought though that I have too, and I don't want to keep beating a dead horse, but I know we've had a number of subdivisions in the past that we've approved with three, four lots that's had a rather large ag remainder. So when we're doing this and setting the precedence here, how many of them are going to try and come back and capitalize on pounding the rest of that ag remainder into these developable lots?
Well, this one has no agricultural remainder.
Yeah, what?
Yeah, this one does not, is not creating any ag remainders.
Okay, but what happens?
Yeah, in those three to four lot subdivisions where they do have an ag remainder, in order for them to develop that, let's say they had 30 acres, they can get three lots. So they did a three lot subdivision, but they're all meeting the minimum standards. They're just half an acre, so they have that large ag remainder left. In order to develop on that, they have to get a rezone, and they have to rezone the entire subdivision. So all the property owners would have to do agreement, planning commission and county council would have to actually approve that rezone, and then they could subdivide.
John, I have a question.
Go ahead, yeah.
Is wastewater system the same as a septic system? Those, are those interchangeable?
Yes. In the case of a county, it is, because that's all we have is septic systems.
Okay.
And it's just the wastewater.
I do have a copy of the Fair River Health Department letter. It was part of the application supplemental, that if you wanted, you could look through that. But yeah. But yeah, they do have to keep away from well protection areas and be 100 feet away from the creek. So they do have those parameters to work with.
But right now, the well protection area is a floating target, is it not?
Depends on where the wells are.
Right, and how, do we have a size on that?
The well protection area?
Right.
100 feet diameter.
My biggest concern is just how we service them from the county standpoint. I mean, if we continue to have these small sub, you know, we're adding, we'll be up to 15 lots here, I think.
The county services were provided their private road, and it comes off of the Smithfield City Road.
Yeah, so the property owners will have to do their own maintenance on those private roads.
So the health department signed off on this with all the wells and the septic systems on a small parcel like this?
They did say it was feasible, and then they'll look at each individual permit as they think so.
That sure make me nervous.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, you know, as we looked at this one, well, we looked at the RU2 as we were going through, trying to figure out the best locations for this higher density of the zone. And per our discussions, as I remember, this, this one made sense in that it was right next to a... To the municipality, they had no desire to annex. And so that was, you know, we have a lot of heartburn over, over these higher densities. And I totally get where, where you're coming from on, on those, on those concerns. But I think this one, I think we'd satisfied those, and so we pass it, and so we sent this on to the council, and they, they agreed on that, so with that, I'd be ready to make a motion if you would.
I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the Creekside Estates subdivision, First Amendment, with the attached 15 conditions and one conclusion.
We have a motion to approve the Creekside subdivision with its amendment sample.
I'm not sure if you wanted to hear any...
And conclusion? What was that?
I'm not sure if you wanted to hear from the applicant at all.
Do we have anybody here as part of the applicant, do you like, do you have any comments? If you do, would you come to the mic and state your name?
I'm Andy Rasmussen, I'm the applicant. Yeah, I mean, really, I know we, we met with everybody last April, went through the whole rezone thing. And so, you know, moving this to an RU2 made sense in this area. I, I can understand, you know, in county development, throwing more and more homes there is a concern. I think in this area where we're at, we're within walking distance to a temple, a school, and the development that's going on just north, less than a half mile away, is on core acre density. So I feel like, you know, this, this is actually preserving some of that ag fill and yet still has large lots, there's enough acreage for drainage. And that's part of the conditions is to make sure there's proper drainage, which there already is off of 8 West. So I, I feel like this is a perfect example of, you know, the RU2 designation. Because we're right up against the city, the city, we comply with all the requirements and will, as we make improvements to these major private roads, we'll obviously work with the city to get the entrances, so they're not driveway entrance or rather a private road entrance. So I just, you know, would hope that the council sees that this fits well in this area and that it benefits the community and that we're trying to preserve still some larger, larger acreage versus what's going on to the north of us. That's all I have. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the applicant north?
I'm just sitting here thinking 15 lots, which is cool, but then I'm thinking 15 wells. So we, as a commission, we've always looked at how much and what we're doing with water, and we've even been challenged with that this year as the water situation goes. Do you know what any of the wells around there are like? I mean, hopping 15 wells in a small place like this gives me a little bit of stress.
So I actually just live half a month south of that. I'm on a shared well, there's five of us on the well that's down about, we dug about 140 feet. And it's about the same distance with the well we dug on this property as well about two years ago, about 140 feet. Water table actually is less than 30 feet below the surface where I live now. And I, I, I mean, I get there's a concern with water always. The important thing here, I guess, is we're transferring existing water rights from another property to this. And so it's not that we're creating new, you know, access to the aquifer within the valley. It's just transferring from one other property that is becoming a dry farm or something. I honestly don't too familiar with it, but I... Though, as we dug, there's two wells already down there, and as, as that was dug, there was quite a bit of water flow from that area. But I mean, I, there's, there's always a concern with pulling more water out of the, out of the aquifer.
So they made application for well permits and they've been approved yet with this site engineer?
So like, yeah, they're actually in, in the process of being transferred. And that's one of the conditions is obviously that those are approved. So right now the...
Are they all going to be on separate wells?
Well...
Are they going to share?
Each lot has to have its own water share, but I know that the four homes on the south side right now are using a shared well. We'll be using a shared well upfront. I mean, the cost of digging a well has gone up tremendously, and so it benefits all of us to just use one well, and there's enough capacity coming out of that.
Do you, do you own the canal or the ditch, or like, there's no canal company involved that owns? Like you own that property?
Yes, the way that the parcels are split...
It's all privately owned?
Yes, it's all privately owned. However, one of the, again, one of the conditions was that there's an easement through there for county maintenance of that decree. There's also the Smithville Irrigation Company. They have a main line that runs on the north side of that, and so there's also access that needs to be maintained for that.
Still, they will have an easement anyway to get service their canal and pipelines.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And then Chairman, I'd just like to point out, we have a public hearing at 6 o'clock for the rezone. And it is almost 6.
We don't have to skip to that agenda though, it just can't happen before 6, is that correct? I believe, if I'm not mistaken.
Typically, council, they feel with the time that it is.
Yeah, they've been soft back and forth currently. That practice has been to try to jump to that if needed. That's not saying that's what you have to do, but it's your agenda and you can pursue that. It is helpful for, you know, just trying to intend to hold that specific window to do it at that time, but it's not a requirement.
Okay. We'd like to skip, well, stay on task. We could, we could skip to the fourth item on our agenda, just to keep, keep with the timing of the public hearing tonight. Before the public hearing opens, if we could get a, a report on what's going on here a little bit from Angie, do you have that or?
Yeah. Flip a few more pages here. So the 2600 West rezone request is a request to rezone 6, or excuse me, 7.34 acres in the existing 40-plus acre parcel from the agricultural to the industrial zone. The applicant initially submitted a request for the commercial zone that recently requested a change to the industrial. So this rezone would allow the parcel to establish uses permitted in the industrial zone. Upon approval of the subdivision, actually. So as Chris posed, since it's just a portion of the larger property, if the rezone were approved, it would result in a split zoning on this property. And then the more restrictive zone, the agricultural zone, would apply to any future development. So before they could do future development, they would have to go through a subdivision to parcel out that commercial section from the remainder of the property. So that's something that we don't usually come across, but so I just wanted to point that out. So staff has identified some general information to help the commission arrive at its decision. It is a legal property, it's in the same size and configuration as of August 2006. And the applicant has provided a survey and legal description for the portion of the larger piece that they want to rezone. That's one of your attachments. The industrial zone allows for a variety of uses, including general manufacturing, storage of warehouse, commercial kennels, et cetera. Sensitive areas, there are some, an open body water, a floodplain and potential wetlands along the western side of the property. However, the area that they're proposing to rezone is located outside that area with relatively few sensitive areas. I think the only major one that can turn it on here that impacts the area they're looking for them is a potential liquefaction. to rezon is a potential liquefaction area and any future development, it would require a geotech to build on that. Those kind of shady sensitive areas and that orange is that liquefaction area that I mentioned is not a portion of the area they're looking to rezon. And that, but all the other major sensitive areas are, will be, remain in the agricultural zoned portion. The properties adjacent to the property in unincorporated county are zoned A-10 primarily. Logan City boundaries are north of the subject property on the other side of the highway where the Logan City wastewater treatment facility is located. To the east of the subject property is a county road, 2600 West, and properties are used for storage facilities on the other side there. Those are zoned agricultural, but were approved at a time where a conditional use permit allowed for storage and warehousing uses. Currently, only, storage and warehousing are only allowed under industrial zoning. And then the nearest other commercial and industrial zones, there was a recent rezon up here at 3200 West and the highway. I don't remember exactly because time is fuzzy these days, but I think it was about a year and a half ago where that was approved. That's in the red. This is the Cashmere Society, that's also a commercial zone. Then we have D.D. Auto and that facility and complex here. So those are the nearest commercial zone where everything in yellow that you see is ag. And then Logan's in that purple across the way there. It is in the Logan City annexation area. In reviewing the map for their policy plan boundaries, the properties appear to be designated in the, I have attached the map, but it's difficult to read, but they appear to be designated as a GWDX, future land use. The GW indicates a gateway and the DX indicates it's a development with exception, meaning that there are wetlands or other sensitive areas that may require additional review and mitigation in order to develop on it. They do come off of the Malibu Highway, but they also have access to 2600 West and 200 North, which are county roads. The county roads run along the east and part of the south property lines. Both of those county roads are currently classified as minor local roads with gravel surfaces and they're graded in the summer, but there's no winter maintenance currently. For any future commercial or industrial use, the county roads must be reclassified and approved to meet the major local road standard at a minimum prior to development. Staff did send out the notice and post it on the websites and in the public places and send it out to the 300-foot radius. I have received no comments regarding it. In the past, you may call staff has kind of left it to the commission to come to a conclusion. We have since been trying to be more proactive at planners and make a recommendation, but with this one, it wasn't entirely clear cut as from our perspective. So I have drafted options for recommendations of approval or denial that I can pass along to you just to help you in your coming to a decision. If you have any questions, that includes my staff.
Thank you, Angie.
So the road would have to be brought up to a major local road standard and that's because of the zoning, because of the industrial zone?
Yeah, and commercial and industrial development will not allow them to leave the west.
Okay.
I think those requirements would apply to even if they got access with approval from UDOT to come off the highway, but I still think, since they're bordering those roads, they would still... I think that's correct.
Okay. Have any comments? The commissioners on this one?
Just a comment for me. I'd like to hear from the applicant as far as the change from commercial to industrial and really the thoughts behind that change.
We could probably do that for the public hearing.
Yeah, for the, before the public hearing. That's just, you know, that's a, that's a major jump in our zone and so I'd just like to hear.
And I'd add a little insight to that. Their future plans currently are to do like storage and warehousing or, and self-storage facilities, but they wanted to be able to have both indoor and outdoor storage and so that's only allowed in the industrial.
Is this the same property that was brought up in the agenda last month?
No, that property is further west.
That's further west, okay. Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to address it?
I can go there.
Yeah. Could state your name so we can get it on the record?
And so, basically what kind of initiated all these changes was January 2019, we were approached by UDOT, as you guys well know, with the expansion going out there. So they moved back the, from the initial plane, they've taken, they pushed this, the property back 72 feet and also if you could go to the satellite view of that, they, and also they've got a temporary construction easement that goes back almost 150. So basically, if you look at that and you zone in on that east side, those are our cows where they're at right now, those little black dots, those are our cows. That's where we're used, we do our calving and all that sort of thing. So the way that we, there's no water or anything there and our corrals are there. The only way they could access it is they would go down on the frontage road to access water and those things. So, fast forward, that's going to, our whole access there is gone now. So, and what that does, it puts us right into the swale and to, just not cost prohibitive, it's kind of cost prohibitive to restore that road, you know, to access that for the animals and we're always taking equipment back and forth. We're going to lose access to our corrals and stuff like that, that's all gone. So, that being said, on that east side, we've been pouring pit run and rock to stay out of the mud for, I don't know, long before my time on that east side with the feeders and everything like that. So it's not like we can turn it back into hay ground because there's just rocks everywhere and by design. So, that being said, when we were working with UDOT, I'm part of the, we don't really know what our future is going to be because on that east side for the next 24 to 36 months, you can't even put a, we can't even put a permanent fence along that road. So, UDOT approached us or, and discussed it with me about using the summer storage lot. I don't have room for them. What they, what they want is be able to access equipment, bring in materials, pipe, whatever they need to, and store their equipment. That's kind of what prompted this, is to, to be considered as a site, you have to be industrial use. Initially, we went commercial and I just wasn't up on all the codes, but it's probably not going to be a restaurant next to the sewer lagoons, so. So from that standpoint, just open storage and whatnot, it'd have to be industrial. And if you look, like I've got a vision here, or they're going to change completely to 2600 West and that comes back 150 feet from the point of view, or where it is now, where you see now, it's going to go close to 150 feet back. So that whole corridor is going to be changed dramatically, what you see now. I mean, right now, it's, we've had, you know, during the wastewater treatment plant, you know, reps have been servicing it quite a bit back and forth and so it's, I don't know, we've had a lot of changes. So that's kind of what we're looking to do is to be, I don't know what our long-term plan is, what that's going to be. UDOT, we'd like to be considered for those guys to have some because they don't really have another access point along there to search, to access everything. They'd be on the south side of the road, which all the expansion's going and this is about the furthest west until you get past the marshes that there's access off the highway. So if anything north, they'd have to cross the highway to access anything.
Any questions for the applicant by the commissioner?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So if UDOT's doing that changes and everything else, you put this as an industrial, put some storage sheds and everything in there, what's going to be the access off of that highway now or how's that going to go?
It'd be still 2600 West, but honestly, at this point, we couldn't even foresee putting storage sheds or any type of building until we know what they're, when they're done because that temporary construction easement goes so far back, it's going to all be temporary fencing. We have to put temporary fencing for our cows that, you know, that we turn in, you know, we're still operating our agriculture on this side of it. We're going to put temporary fencing and all that stuff. So you really couldn't foresee what we're going to do, I mean, I still got on that other side, I just don't have room. Mostly after UDOT, we'd have to just relook at it and see what use or anything to that point. Then we'd have to come back to you guys when we have a clearer picture. It just kind of, kind of got turned everything upside down out there when UDOT did their, when that expansion happened.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'd make a motion, we open the public hearing.
You have a motion to open the public hearing? Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now open.
I'm sorry, I second that.
If you don't have any other comments, public hearing is now open. If anyone else has any comments that would like to come up, feel free.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now close.
I got one question for staff. Is this Rupp Properties LLC, is that zoned A-10 as well?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It is.
It is.
Yeah, so they were approved under a conditional use permit that allowed them to operate this type of facility. The code has changed since then, so they would not be allowed to operate that without changing it to industrial.
Good question.
That's been 10 or more years ago.
So if they did come in to expand it, they'd probably have to take that rezon first. They're not before.
Hey, I do have one question. How does your neighbor, Mr. Lundberg, feel about this?
I don't even know what the hell is going on.
Okay.
Well, he got rid of his buffalo, so we shut our cows down on him, so.
Well, he must agree with you because he's going to come up and dispute, so.
Well, that's the thing, I mean...
Somebody will show me what, what piece they're talking about, what's going on, not getting figured out.
I'm going to try, draw a kind of a box around the area they're thinking of rezon, requesting.
So, basically, if you look at that ditch, you know where, you know where we bring that water out? Yeah, just right about there. So, just that east side, we're, you know how we shut off, we're, we shut the water off from that east side. So one, one other thing, so that east has water access onto that side and we're not going to, they want a pipe 780, 720 feet. We're like, that's not going to work. So what we're going to do is irrigate as much as we can from that other lateral off that west side, but that's, you know, we cap out right there. That we're talking about.
Well, what about the lane that comes in there? Going to be for buildings or what is it?
We're anybody stated so far, we don't know.
I have problems going in my lane there or in that lane with Rupp's trucks come in there and they kick up a big cloud of dust and I can't wait for five minutes until the dust all settles. And if they're going to have a lot of traffic or something on that road, they better, well...
Rupp's did put regrind on that and all that, but they're back and forth from the sewer treatment plant, back and forth, and so it's been, that, and Bates Road, that, that whole section of highway's been a mess for the last year. So they got sweepers out there, they had them out, but UDOT, I don't know, because of that.
Well, I can't see anywhere what this is going to, how this is affecting me.
Well, good, we don't want to make you mad, so. Commissioners, what do we want to do here?
It looks to me like they've, they're kind of forced into this because of DOT's changes and until they get their program done, why you really can't fault them for wanting to make these kind of changes to be able to utilize that ground at all and it's like we kind of got to go that direction and give them some options.
Yeah, I, it's, for me, it's a mismatch with the gateway zone that Logan wants to eventually have, you know, it doesn't seem to do that, but I agree that, I like the cooperation with UDOT and I, I think for temporary purposes that I would be fine to happen.
I guess my only comment is just the, maybe you want to talk, just the, always the caution on the, on the industrial zone because it is so broad and allows so many things that, once that zone is changed, that's the, you know, the gateway, for lack of, lack of a better terms, into, into a lot of different businesses there. I think Logan not, deciding not to comment on this is probably a pretty good indication that, that they're, that they're okay with, with this being an industrial use. But I just say that caution because it does allow things that can be objectionable in an area like that.
I'm sure they'll end up having to build a fence and so, like, D and D always have to do it, but then you've got the sewer system on the other side of the highway. So I can't see where this would be a problem, to put an industrial zone there.
Yeah, cops shooting guns across the street all night, so, so from a commercial standpoint, like, I wouldn't see a business being in there.
Hey, the cops shooting the guns across the street keeps the roughnecks out of there, right?
It may, yeah. You know, as far as that goes, I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm, we're still operating our farm, we're not going to let, I don't want something in there that I don't, you know, I mean, I'm still going to...
So your main reason for doing this is because UDOT has approached you?
No, I mean, we don't, like, all that, that area, we can't, we can't, our cows aren't going to do more and we pour concrete and all that sort of stuff, feeders, it's not like we can handle anymore, so, got to make something, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to clarify then, though, as I read this, I was just looking for clarification. Will the applicant then be required to pave and bring up the standard, the 2600 West and Second South that this property abuts?
That's part of the conditional use permit when they come in for that.
What, I read it in here, but I just wanted to clarify that because that would resolve Mr. Lundberg's concern as well, that that road would be, the dust would be taken care of, but I just was curious.
Well, I better rent a two lane out of that road in there, so if there's traffic coming in, you can still get it past. Right now, it's just a one-way road, just a lane.
But any future development would require that.
It would have to have that.
Just because of the zoning, it would require it, though.
It would require it.
That it would be improved.
Would you have something to say? No? Anybody else? Chris?
I'm going to throw one more thing on your plate, just to consider and also for the applicant to be aware of. Whenever you develop in the gateway zone of a community, there's a state code requirement that says if, oh, through all phases of development, it's like, if you... if you spend more than 650,000, or maybe 750, I forget.
750, I think it is.
750, which is, you're going to do in a heartbeat with storage units, uh, seems like anymore. That we are required as a county to send a letter to Logan City to allow them to provide, provide feedback. And then, we don't have to do what they ask, but they usually will give us feedback and list some of the expectations they might have for a gateway-type zone. And you're able to look at those and consider them and see if they're applicable for this specific area and make a determination. So while Logan City did not comment at the rezon level, they may have some comment at the conditional use permit level. So just more of an awareness piece for everybody to be cognizant of that requirement. And they may not. If they don't respond, that's pretty much an agreement to let it go as it is, but if they did respond, it's just another piece to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion. I move that we, uh, suggest the county council approval of the 2600 West rezon. With the conclusion provided of 1 and 1A.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Jumping back up to our second item on the agenda, we have the advanced shoring conditional use permit. Can we read the report on that?
Uh, so this is a conditional use permit amendment, request to amend, um, a previously approved CUP to operate a storage and warehousing facility located on, uh, 10 parcels located in the industrial zone, uh, just outside of Hiram. Uh, the planning commission approved a CUP in July 2019. But the applicant then decided to make some significant changes to that original request through an amendment that was approved in, uh, May 2020. And then, although both of those were approved, neither has been recorded prior to the expiration of the land use authority's approval. And so they're both considered void. But this current request has changed a little bit from the previous two requests. In 2018, the rezon was approved from agricultural to industrial. Uh, and so the applicant is now seeking to move forward with the storage and warehousing facility. Uh, per his letter of intent, which is attachment A, he's going to be using the southeast portion of this area here. For the, um, storing, refurbishing, and repairing of construction equipment. Uh, in previous requests, the applicant had also requested to operate an open-air RV storage boat area on the north side, but that has been removed from the current letter of intent and is not part of this request. There's three existing buildings on site. The applicant had originally proposed to use those existing wood frame metal structures for the construction company, but determined they were not practical for the proposed use. And so he is planning on building a new, uh, 3,900 square foot structure here with access off of 4,400 South. Um, again, he stated that the properties were repairing and refurbishing and storing construction equipment. The type of equipment that would be used on site would be mainly forklifts, backhoes, and cranes. Uh, with various types of foundation construction equipment such as drilling rigs and concrete pumps stored on the property as well as some construction material. Uh, the applicant states there would be five employees working on the site at any one time. And with hours of operation Monday through Friday and some Saturdays, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Uh, access to the properties I mentioned will be for 4,400 South. Uh, all parking and loading, unloading of trucks will occur on the property inside of a fenced area. And the applicant anticipates about one to two semi-truck deliveries per week. Uh, power is already currently installed on the property as well as a 30,000 gallon, um, dry fire hydrant, which was a previous condition of approval, um, to comply with the fire district requirements. So the fire district has reviewed and approved that water suppression system. Signage would be on the entrance gate and then, uh, waste is planned to be collected in a commercial dumpster and removed regularly. Uh, in industrial areas, the setback is 30 feet from the property line, so you would not be able to store any materials on that. Condition of approval is that a revised site plan is submitted that shows he's in compliance with all those setbacks and development standards. C-13, I do reference the kennel, uh, which we're talking about in a moment, uh, that, yeah, was a typo, it shouldn't be this. As the kennel, um, this development also must comply with the chapter 1710 development standards. Specific to the base zone district that includes bad, so it's screening or fire, so that is a condition of approval as well.
Thank you. Were you done?
I can't.
No, I thought you said you, you got.
Just a couple.
Okay, sorry.
Just a couple more notes. Uh, so there is obviously frontage on 1500 West and 4,400 South. They are both considered substandard as to shoulders and clear zone. A condition of approval is that he works with, public works on just making sure that the road complies with their standards and then close up any accesses that are not being used. I think there are about three down on 1500 West. Other than that, any anticipated or reasonably anticipated detrimental effects from this proposed use would just be the site development itself and the stormwater concerns that would be addressed through a stormwater report that the, uh, public works department would review. Uh, noise could be a consideration for a construction, um, site where they're refurbishing and repairing equipment, but given the location and the surrounding uses, um, that is not a concern. Again, perhaps visual, the storage of equipment could negatively impact views. Again, just still have to be in compliance with that chapter 1710 of the code. And then with that, staff has recommended the conditions, the 10 conditions listed and is recommending approval with those conditions. So with that.
And thank you, and I apologize. Thanks, Angie. Any comments or questions? Is the applicant here tonight? Would you like to address us? Any comments?
You don't have to.
You don't, it's not required. Would you state your name?
I'm Herr Danforce. The only thing I want to add is there's a, it shows, um, a pond there that has been removed with a permit from the Corps of Engineers, which he submitted a letter. It's in the report.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mention that.
Yeah, if you were wondering.
I think it was related to the old pond.
Yeah, yeah. So that's all. Thank you.
So any questions or comments?
If there aren't any, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
I make a motion that we approve the advanced shoring CUP amendment 2021 based on the 10 conditions and two conclusions as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item tonight is on the Brian Hanson conditional use permit. We're revisiting this one from a few months back. What has changed that's said?
What has changed, the applicant has submitted a request to, um, consider revising the, uh, screening and landscaping requirements under chapter 1710. This was reviewed and approved with conditions on September at your meeting then. Uh, I've attached the full staff report with, as approved, uh, to this memo. Uh, the applicant submitted attachment B, which is, um, consideration of waiving some of the screening requirements and, um, allowing the existing, uh, planting areas on the site to be considered their, uh, meeting their landscape requirement. Uh, so I've included that section of code with the screening and landscaping requirements as well as, um, item F there that allows the planning condition. Uh, they may modify any provision of the screening and landscaping sections of this chapter if strict adherence to requirements should be delayed or is deemed unnecessary. Uh, staff has not made any recommendations on that, but, um, the applicant is here to address those issues. See if you'd be willing to modify any of those requirements.
Okay. Before we hear from the applicant, do we have any questions, concerns on this one? Do you, do you have any comments for?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay. On the last, uh, last time we saw this, was there, was there a provision that allowed them to? This was approved last time. I'm just curious what they decided on the, the frontage. I think it was a frontage issue before, was that?
Probably setback.
This, was it the setback on the, from the commercial?
I think so.
And that was, was there an allowance for that?
UDOT to along the highway, um, that has been resolved and they have certain things.
I was just, I just was curious how that was resolved, yeah. That worked?
Yeah, that, I think the setback here, we're talking about 50-foot setback.
Right, yeah.
That's part of the, um, the ordinance. Or the, the definition of the commercial kennel itself.
Okay.
Can't be wrong.
Any comments or concerns? Would you like to handle this?
In this, in this area, I can see, you know, amending that to, uh, uh, the difference vision barriers and things like that. I, it's far enough out there that I don't see any reason to push for any other standards.
We're talking about the east side of the property, is that correct, where the revision?
Yeah.
That's just a big field, correct? Yeah.
Anything that's adjacent to an agricultural or residential, so.
So would we be, um, like, removing that condition? Would that be the action you're looking for, or?
Yeah, so you may, uh, modify that provision or condition for the screening or adherence to this section of code if you believe strict adherence, um, is not necessary. But yeah, that's up to the land use authority to make that modification, so that's why we're bringing it back here for reconsideration.
So they're asking to use the field as the buffer, as, rather than a fence?
Yeah, so in their letter, they talk about, um, the property line is, you know, neighboring agricultural field. And if screening were to be placed on that property line, it could interfere with the farming that occurs there. The owner of that agricultural field does not want it firm to be placed, um, on, between those two pieces of land, and they did attach a letter from him as well.
Or a fence or any other kind of screening.
I would be willing to accept a motion if we're at that point.
I would be happy to make a motion if I, if I knew exactly how to make a motion.
Uh, I think the condition that applies to that is.
We're just amending the condition, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
Or eliminating it or modifying it?
Yeah.
So we're amending the condition with the, the condition number?
I mean, you're just amending condition six.
Amending condition six.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend condition, condition six in the Brian Hanson conditional use permit.
Are we two, hang on, I'm sorry to interrupt, but condition six?
Is that right? I was going off.
Is that the right?
Well, that's what she, Chairman, that's what she was telling.
It reverses that section of code 1710, 30.
Okay.
You might need to add, no, it says with the exception of the requirement for screening.
Okay.
Your intent is to remove that.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, because I was looking for that specific language or something.
Are we doing that to the entire kennel or just the east side?
Oh, these apply just to technically that east side that, um, is immediately adjacent to that other zone. But they're also asking for, um, a revision on the landscaping requirement, so just keep that in mind.
So, yeah, it's two things.
Correct, yeah, two, two pieces of that section of code that are addressed under.
I apologize, Jason, I just.
No, that's all right, just tell me.
We appreciate the clarity.
I want to ensure that we, that we get, that we get this motion correct. Mr. Chairman, I move that we that we amend the Brian Hanson conditional use permit. Condition six, help me.
With the exception of?
You could read at the end of this first sentence. Um, instead of saying specific to base zoning districts, period, we would say.
Is that in six?
Districts comma, with the exception of the requirements for screening and landscaping.
Okay. What he said, I'll add to my motion. And then we needed, then we needed a, a secondary uh, a part B to that?
No.
No, that covers both of those?
Screening and landscaping.
I'm happy with my motion.
So we, so we have a so we have a motion to amend condition six of the, of this condition, uh,
Brian Hanson.
Of the Brian. Brian Hanson conditional use permit, with this exception, do we have a second?
I second that.
With the, whoops, all right. Let me back up, with the exception. So, do we have a second?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is just a reference to, well, to have you review and approve the meeting dates and application deadlines for next year. Um, the meeting dates all lined up on the first Thursday of the month, there didn't seem to be anything looking for holidays. So that is just consistent throughout the year. Yeah, we usually bring it forward to you just early.
We have a motion to accept the 2020 meeting dates and application deadlines?
I'll make a motion, we accept that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We did change the time of your meeting to noon.
Oh. No, I didn't see that.
We did those for eight hours.
Expecting some long meetings.
For our next meeting, we'll be electing a new chair and vice, so expect everybody to be there next, next month? And with that, we don't have anything else, we'll adjourn.
I have some more.
Or do you have anything else?
Yeah, if you can pause just a moment. Um, two things. If there's any of you who are at the end of your term, I know that, uh, Mr. Zook is looking at those and visiting those, so if you get a call from me, I might just be touching base to see what your experience has been. Confirm if you still want to serve on the commission, et cetera. Um, and if there's changes. We'll see, we'll see what happens there. Um, the other thing is I know Mr. Olson is getting close on time and he's expressed to you earlier, but, uh, this is, I don't think his last meeting, but near second to last. So I think Phil will be here for our December meeting, which will be a big one, so that'll be a way to go out.
Let's elect Phil as chair.
Is it a big one because of the agenda?
Yes.
And also because it's Phil's last.
Phil's last meeting. Um, so, uh, he's provided some names and there's some names that David's considering or, uh, Executive Zook is considering and uh, there, you're likely to have a new commissioner at the beginning of the new year. So just kind of a heads up on that. I know that we have typically, I think your term is a three-year term unless you filled in for somebody. And then, depending on who you are, those three-year terms never end.
I like that I was going to ask Chris, but I do.
How many years?
When you call them and even if they say no, tough luck, right?
You never know, so anything can happen.
Phil, how many years?
I don't have a clue.
12?
We'll, we'll, we'll give a full slideshow, you don't know.
Baby pictures.
Just about. Uh, the second thing I wanted to bring up was the, Phil reminded me of this. I think he attended it, and some of you may have attended the cash summit last year. What the cash summit is, is an opportunity for, uh, kind of the government staff and the developers to meet together and talk and try to get on the same page of what's happening in the county and in the valley. And so this is coming up on November 18th. Thank you. Angie's got it pulled up on the screen here. It's just at the Cash County Event Center over by the fairgrounds. Or on the fairgrounds. It runs from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM and you're welcome to attend and come in and go out, whatever your schedule would allow. It runs from nine AM to five PM and you're welcome to attend and come in and go out, whatever your schedule would allow. But we'll cover the cost for you to attend. I just need you to RSVP to me by end of day tomorrow so I can get you signed up and registered. I'll put me now. Okay, Phil?
I'll be there.
Tim, if you, will you keep track of these, Phil, or Tim, excuse me? Lane?
Yes, I'll be there.
Lane and Phil guaranteed. Uh, Melinda, anyone else want to attend, able to attend. That is a.
Thursday, Thursday.
So.
Do, do you have, like, if a guy was limited on time, do you have, uh, agenda workshops that might be beneficial? Or that you could get back to us?
Yes.
They haven't published it yet.
Well, then you get an email on it, because it has the agenda.
I did and I didn't open it, I apologize.
Really?
I can look at it, did it have a?
I've got two different ones though.
We'll make sure that you get an agenda.
Did it have the agenda in that?
We'll just send one out so you know when you reach us, there's an agenda attached. We'll make sure that gets to each of you, take a look at it, there's some good topics in there, um, that are helpful for some of the discussions you hear as a commission. Especially as we start thinking about what this commission will do in the future and some of the involvement you're gonna have with our general plan discussion, which is coming your way very shortly. These are gonna be critical discussions you're gonna be thinking about, so this might be a good primer, um, to kind of whet your whistle with what's coming. I think it's worth your time, but again, I know schedules are tight often, so if you can be there for part of the day, great, that's fine. If you need it the whole day, that's fine.
You can add my name too.
Okay, Chris Sands will be there, Tim. And the rest, just let me know, so Brady, Brandon, Jason.
I'll, I'll get with you.
Okay. We'll get you signed up. And Phil, and the same for Taylor and Nolan, whatever you guys would like to do. Uh, it'd be good for you to attend and be aware of those pieces.
Do you see any, do you have an idea of how many developers or number wise there or anything else?
Last year we had two hundred total attendees. Uh, it's been around, it's, it's been growing each year. I think the first year was around a hundred and twenty that we had, and that's been maybe five or so years ago. But it's a good opportunity to have those, those discussions. Oh yeah, the mid-year summit, we focused on the, the housing question, which will come up again and again over the next few years. So all this is tied together. I think it's very beneficial, because we're not just dealing with somebody that's coming out of Salt Lake, but we're working with our typical partners in the valley.
For the cities invited to this also, then?
Yes, whoever wants to attend is welcome to attend.
Yep, and see, realtors, developers, bankers, yeah, city staff, councils, commissions.
Yes.
I thi, I feel like it's a really great blend of all of those partnerships that, the stakeholders that end up working together.
And, and keep in mind, this started as a kind of collaboration between some private business in the county and BRAG. And having a discussion saying, we need to have a different discussion than this currently occurring. So that's, that's where it stemmed from and that's where it keeps growing from, is that need for collaboration and discussion.
Sometimes air quality has been in it, you know, they'll talk about, there's a lot of different things that come up.
You have attended in the past, okay. Anything else, Chris?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I had two questions.
Yeah.
Hey, I just hope we got our eyes dogged and our teeth crossed for the airport till next month.
You want to update?
Sure. Only if you want to give it, but I know last month was a.
You got two minutes.
Poop show.
Well, in last month, I think you could have moved forward, but I thought in, in the matter of just being a hundred percent certain on all bases, it was good to pause. So the question that came up in why it's not on the discussion tonight is I reached out to them, they still hadn't submitted anything two to three weeks out, and we need time to review it. Provide comment and still get it to you. And I made them aware that that was necessary, which they already were aware of, but I reminded them and they, they weren't ready. And I said, that's fine, but December is gonna be the date, and whether they're ready or not, you're gonna need to discuss it December. We can't just hold out until they get their ducks in a row. I don't think that's fair to, uh, process. So they're supposed to be.
That's what Mr. Chambers is gonna say again.
And they've had.
It's not fair.
Even at the last meeting, they've been noticed a month in advance. And so I understand his concern and question, but due process had been met. And our attorney's office had confirmed that, and just in an abundance of caution, we postponed. It is well worth our time to dig into the details and meet one time and make a decision solid. If it does go to court, that only looks good for the commission and for the county. So that's the route we've taken, but really December is a cutoff. Otherwise, we're gonna be swinging to the other side of that discussion and not doing our due diligence to respond to a, a violation or a safety issue. Because there is a structure there in these zones, so we have to address both sides. So December count on it.
As you talk about the countywide planning going forward, does there been any talk about where an airport fits in a zone? Like A-ten or whatever else, have you talked about that? So that gives us some insight as we talk about future planning on that?
We've had some internal discussion with staff and I think with some council members and probably even some commissioners after our last meeting. That it makes a lot of sense to amend that piece of code to accommodate, um, those impacts. So that if a runway is on a property, it needs to fully be on the property, including all runway protection areas and zones. So any potential impact is considered. Another thing that was discussed was nuisance that might occur with noise, uh, depending on the frequency of landing and takeoff. It is a tricky thing to address because this is in the A-ten zone where the primary use is ag. Houses are secondary, airplanes are secondary, airplanes are closer mixed to ag than houses are. And so that is a really good discussion point to bring up when we start looking at this general plan as to what types of uses fit in our zones. And what kind of zones we have in the county to accommodate them. So I guess that's a two-part answer. One, we can amend the code in the short term with a minor tweak if the council's on board. And two, we also need to be aware when we start looking at the general plan and what zones might come after that for implementation. That will do their, their part in lifting and not just have all the conditional use permits do all the lifting. We should have the zone set up to do some of that lifting, um, to be clear with, if something's zoned ag, guess what's gonna occur there? Primarily ag operations. If something's zoned ag commercial and making stuff up, um, that would anticipate a different type of use. So just some ideas that we've been chewing around in our discussions. If you look on the county Imagine Cash website, you're gonna see a future land use map there that provides some preliminary information based on input from staff, from the council, from our steering committee, from the public. That identifies some key ideas or areas or, um, that might feed into that zoning question. Long answer, I apologize, um, but absolutely we need to address those. If council's on board with that, Nolan?
I see that, I'm, I'm sitting here saying, okay, you got an A-ten. And the popularity of these small airports coming around here, there gets to be a big conflict, and so.
Well, usage, when we approved the one for amending, but when you're talking forty trips a month? I mean, I can, I can see and understand one a week or two or three a week, but, but forty a month? That, that's more than one flight every day.
Well, that's more than most people pull in their field in a month too with trucks running out.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's where I'm saying that there's, it's not a real fair comparison possibly.
And it's a timing issue, it's a timing. If you take off at, at noon in the middle of the day, you're probably less impactful than taking off at five AM.
But we can't, we, we can't add any of those restrictions, right? You said all of it's FAA, you talked about noise, but we couldn't add any of that.
If you go into the code, you can add restrictions. You can add noise requirements.
They can't be conditions on the conditional use.
You can't tell that they can't fly. That's an FAA requirement, but you can determine where they land and what that runway looks like. Currently, the code says they have to meet the requirements of that circular fifteen hundred. I forgot it's a long name, but, um, AC fifteen hundred something. And currently, that's what they're doing, and, um, I think the easy solution we have is just kind of an in-between solution, a Band-Aid solution is. Making sure all those zones are accommodated on an, accommodated on an existing parcel. You can't overstretch and extend onto an adjacent parcel. That's the low hanging fruit. And maybe some direction or discussion about impacts of noise. That might get a little trickier and take some research on our part to figure out what that impact might be. And if a muffler is sufficient mitigation to, say they've mitigated an impact, like the last one, he had that muffler on his airplanes.
Yeah, but we're also sitting there saying, okay, you got a county, but you actually have a community airport out here. So how necessity, this just gets back to what Brady's talking about, frequency and everything else on there. It's like, the rest of us get in our car and drive to commission meeting, we don't get on a plane and hop in there, so. This frequency of flying and agriculture and everything else, it doesn't seem to be jiving well, so.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's more a proximity issue with houses.
Yeah.
It's not a proximity with ag, it's a proximity with houses.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so, would you push them to a community airport and that's not, not far away when you're sitting in a county like this? I, I, I would caution for that only because, uh, just as an example, my, my father's a rancher in Nevada. He's also a pilot and he has runway on his land.
And I can see.
But, 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 but it, you know, the flying is a tool for his operation, it's not. He's not, what we seem to be seeing is more recreational kind of stuff, and so there is a difference, but I wouldn't want to say we're not gonna allow any airports at all. You know, outside of the municipal airport, because I think there could be, you know, legitimate agricultural purposes. Well, I agree with you, that's why I said it comes down to that mix of agricultural, house and everything else on that part.
Can it be in like an A-ten zone, but say actually for an airport, you'd have to have a minimum thirty acres or something?
This is a challenge every airport, municipal or private basis, because there is an impact, it's significant. If you look at the Logan Airport and how far those zones extend, it's, it's, it goes clear to Richmond, right? From, from, uh, the airport itself, it goes clear to Richmond, the impact. Can I ask a question on that? So if the, if the Logan Airport made a significant, Logan Cash Airport made a significant change in their operations, would they? If we made this tweak in the, in the zone, would that then require them to own all of the parcels? That they're impacted by? That they're impacting? The Logan Cash Airport is unique, so right now, uh, our code defines two different things. There's a public airport and a private airport. So the distinction would be in, in kind of refining the requirements of a private airport. The public airport is exactly as you've identified, is, that would be a significant impact. And that would fail if we tried to make that a requirement. But it's something that they have a challenge with and every chance they get, if you look around the airport, you're gonna find these, um, navigation easements that say, um, the airport doesn't own the property, but there's an easement across it that says you can't put a structure on it. To a certain height.
Certain kind of structure, yeah.
It, 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 it graduates from.
Vehicle height, they got signs there along the north side of the airport.
That's for just public or that's also for private?
Public only.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Because like on this one that we're, that we'll have next month, where that structure, it wasn't that they were illegal in building that structure, they can do whatever they want on their private property. It just then inhibited the people with the airport.
Correct. It was anticipated under the commission at the time that there may be an impact and, and, um.
Yeah, because there was an existing structure at the other end of the runway, I think, that was only like five feet from outside the restrictions or something like that, really close.
Right as they were recording that other permit, or it was permitted at the time. So they, they were hoping to have a longer runway, that they had a shortcut from like twelve hundred feet to six hundred feet, to the minimum that they could possibly consider. But that restricts their ability to land, and so when you hear that discussion come up where people will look at it, try to figure out if they could land there and then don't? That's because they recognize that it's not feasible for them to land their aircraft on that short runway. A twelve hundred foot runway would probably make most aircraft able to land, I would assume. But, uh, I, great discussion, I think we can look at that and the staff proposed some initial small pieces for tweaks related to those private airports and those zones and maybe some noise questions. And that could even come up as an impact and mitigation tool that the commission can just adjust, address as part of a conditional use permit. But I'd like to have us do some research first, so we're not totally in the dark on answering questions about it.
I don't want to extend this any longer, but this is the only other thing that I think we need to be considering, both as the council and staff. Is with the cost of housing today from a rental standpoint and the difficulty in finding employers, employees, employment issues. I think we need to be prepared, I've heard some buzz already of people wanting to put up housing for their employees, agricultural as well as other. So I know Bear Lake's already, or Garden City's doing it, but I just think we need to be aware of it and be ready for it. Because, uh, it's a golden handcuff, if they can do it, they can't get help.
So almost like dormitories, I mean, is that what you mean, like?
Temporary housing?
Yes, whether, whether we consider temporary housing, I know our code right now says you can only have one residence on a parcel. But, I mean, especially for our ag folks, if this was a help to them to be able to get employees and keep them, it's something for us to consider.
That's, that's something that's come up in a different fashion in trying to figure out, but very related fashion of how we're gonna address the need for that, what they call the missing middle housing problem, which is. You have some young group or, or group, family or student graduating from USU, and they'd like to purchase a home in the valley, but they have no possible way to even rent or purchase a home, because the price, they're priced out of the market. And so that's the question that's come up. We've had some discussion about figuring out some amendments to our code for short-term, um, or accessory dwelling unit type solutions to that. And so we've been talking about that very, at the very beginning of that. But it's something we've recognized, it's come up in multiple discussions and issues. We don't have a solution yet.
So if I could just interject, um, John, Luther and I, we went to the, a conference of civil attorneys of the state of Utah down in Kanab. Very beautiful, very nice, but we also talked about, um, people, the attorneys, it's county attorneys in Moab, uh, in Grants, County, San Juan County, um, Uwanta County. These, they're all dealing with the same issue that they have very desirable jobs in Summit County and Moab and Kanab and St. George, but again, there's this housing issue. And so they discussed different, uh, options that they took. In Moab, they zoned several areas in a special way that only locals could buy it. It could only be owned by locals. Summit County, uh, is clamping down on, um, short-term leases and rentals, so Airbnbs, VRBOs, that's, that sort of thing. To try and push out the investor type class and allow more space for long-term renters. So these are things that people all over the state are thinking about and doing currently, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised at the legislative session if we'll see some state-directed legislative actions that are encouraging or directing counties and cities to have, take some action. Has everyone met Taylor already? Uh, if you haven't met Taylor, Taylor Sorenson is a new civil attorney, deputy civil, I can't remember your title, it's Taylor, I apologize. Uh, deputy, deputy, deputy attorney, uh, in our attorney's office, and, uh, we're very happy to have him and, um, look forward to working with him more well in the years to come. This, next commission meeting might be a fun challenge in some of our discussion, but, um, we'd love to sit down with Taylor and hear some of the stuff you're, what you've learned. Uh, in that meeting you attended. And I know that's come up in multiple instances.
So it is, it's a critical.
If you, and if you have those, oh, sorry.
So, yeah, unlike the House Bill eighty-two that they, that just passed, that made all cities had to allow accessory dwelling units. But is that just cities, was that not applicable to county?
It was, uh, population-based and it applied to counties also.
Okay.
But it was a pretty low bar, like what we're meeting is, is leaps and bounds beyond what that required.
Oh, I know that, I just know if, do you got, is there something on the books then at the county level for accessory dwelling units?
We allow accessory apartments.
Okay.
We do not allow detached dwelling units, we don't allow condos or multifamily housing.
Yeah.
With the exception of probably in our resort recreation zone, which is not reasonable for anyone to pursue. That's a two thousand acre minimum development and it's specific to recreational scope. Tied to a golf course, it's significant.
Well, Hyde Park City, is that?
Well, Hyde Park City had, had already had on their books allowing accessory dwelling units. So you can, you can't have a separate one. You can't have an apartment in your detached garage, but you could in your home. And they've had that for five years and we have a handful is all, over five years. So I don't know that that's going to fix much. I mean, I'd like, you know, I'd love the idea, but we just haven't had anyone, I guess, not many legally take advantage of it. I don't know how many are doing it on the side.
On the side in the county, there's several that we're not aware of. Um, and then there's a few that we have that show up and come through with the process. It's a zoning clearance, like if you were to build a home or something. Their requirements are fairly strict on what was, it's a maximum of a thousand square feet. Um, it's intended to be secondary to the home. So you don't turn into, uh, the home is this big and the accessory unit's this big. It's just a little backwards. So we have some requirements attached to that. The discussion's coming up of how to handle or allow different types of housing.
And that House Bill eighty-two said you couldn't, because we have the same thing. They had to rent out the smaller portion of the house. And that House Bill eighty-two took that away. It said you can't limit the size of either. You can't say it has to be owner occupied, but they don't have to occupy the bigger portion.
Yeah, and it is a challenge as a county. You could guess that we're not the heavy lift on providing housing.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not as economical as having someone closer to the resources that are in a community, in a city. Being out in the county is, has benefit, but it's usually not the benefiting, the low income side of things. Lower income, I should say.
Thanks for all your comments. Great discussion. There's a lot coming up in the upcoming year that we look forward to.
I feel like you guys didn't feel like the meeting went long enough, so we just had.
Usually we're such a hurry to get out, or it has gone so long, we had an extra minute or two. With that, we'll adjourn.